Hello everyone, I call to order the York County Regular School Board Meeting for October 24th, 2022. Our Vice Chair, Mr. Myatt, is not feeling well this evening, so is unable to be with us, but we wish him a quick recovery. We're in the last full week of October, and then we move into a fast-paced holiday season. We are almost finished with our first quarter of school, and there are many exciting things taking place with our students in our classrooms, and we will celebrate several of those this evening. First, I'll read our YCSD mission statement. The mission of the York County School Division is to ensure every student is valued, supported, and challenged through learning experiences which prepare them for a successful future. Next, I will share some information regarding our pledge leader this evening, Thomas Anderson, a fifth grade student from TAB Elementary. All right, Thomas is a fifth grade student at TAB Elementary School. He is the youngest of three children who are all TAB Elementary alumni. Thomas's teacher and family describe him as hilarious and fun, but serious at times. His hobbies include flying his RC plane, playing on his Nintendo Switch, and taekwondo. He earned his first degree black belt in June. Thomas says that writing and science are his favorite subjects in school because he likes doing science experiments and writing stories. He is also an avid reader. Thomas's aspirations are to follow in his parents' footsteps and join the Air Force, specifically to fly jets. Please stand as Thomas leads us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in a visible liberty and justice for all.
Great job, Thomas. Next, we're going to move into our recognitions and awards portion of the evening. And first, we have our Seniors of the Month. The following students are being recognized for their achievements, and it's great to have them here with us. When your name is called, would you please stand with the family and friends that you have with you so you can be recognized? We'll start off with Mr. Schaefer.
All right. Ayana Moore is the Senior of the Month for Bruton High School. Her parents are Erin Moore, Sam Gavin, and Uriah Moore. Ayana is the October Senior of the Month. She is an accomplished scholar, multi-sport athlete, and future Ready graduate. She is a dedicated and responsible leader and has served in several leadership roles in clubs and honor societies. She is curious, enthusiastic, and eager to learn. Ayana is a three-time gold medalist in the NAACP's Afro-Academic Cultural Technological and Scientific Olympics, ACO. She was named the Most Outstanding AP Language and Composition Student and the Most Outstanding Economics and Personal Finance Student in 2021. This summer, she represented Bruton High School at the FBLA National Convention and at Mercy College Business Honors Summer Leadership Academy, where she was offered a On the Spot Scholarship, which is pretty cool, yeah. She learned about business careers from those who've worked at Fortune 500 companies across the globe. Ayana participates in field hockey, indoor and outdoor track and field, tennis, cross-country, York County School of the Arts, she's Dance Arts, and the Governor's Health Science Academy at Bruton. This year, she is working to earn a certification as a personal fitness trainer. She is also a member of the Key Club, FBLA, HOSA, the French Math and Chemistry Honor Societies, and the National Honor Society. Ayana maintains a 4.6 grade point average. We are very proud of Ayana's accomplishments and look forward to continued success in the future. Congratulations.
And next, Mr. Richardson?
Yes, I have Grafton High School's Senior of the Month, and it is Kayla Fields. If you'd stand up along with your parents, your mother and father are here. And you have some aunts and uncles and your grandmother are here, let them stand up as well. Yeah, everybody stand up if you'd like, or you... okay, perfect. Well, there's no one at Grafton High School more deserving of this honor than Kayla Fields. She currently maintains a 4.27 grade point average, which is impressive in and of itself. However, it becomes even more impressive when one knows how many other things apart from the grade point average that Kayla is juggling simultaneously. Kayla is the epitome of a student-athlete. She has been a varsity contributor in four sports during her tenure at Grafton and is currently team captain in three sports. She is a student aide for an extremely busy faculty member, and Kayla is a key contributor to the yearbook and various other clubs. Even with her busy schedule and minimal spare time, she somehow managed to accumulate over 150 hours of community service. Kayla is highly thought out by our coaches, teachers, and classmates. She constantly shows her character by being willing to help everyone. Kayla Fields is self-motivated, has a positive attitude, has a tremendous work ethic, and a strong student mentality. Kayla is a great representation of what we want of all students at Grafton High School to aspire to be. We are proud of her and cannot wait to see what she accomplishes next. Congratulations, Kayla.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes, it's my pleasure to read about Adrian Ryan. If you could please stand up with Mr. and Mrs. Jack Ryan, his parents, and siblings Shane and Jake. We are extremely pleased to present Adrian Ryan as the TAB High School Senior of the Month for October. Adrian is the voice of TAB through his morning announcements. He starts every day with an upbeat and positive message and helps bring everyone together with his humor and uplifting remarks. He exemplifies one of his favorite quotes by an unknown author, "Live the change you want to see in the world," by being an outstanding leader and role model for many. Adrian is an evolved student at TAB, participating in JV soccer, clubs, and contests. In addition to his membership in Model UN, Chess Club, and Beta Club, he has been a member of the SCA, where he serves as the current Webmaster. He's also been a member of Key Club since 10th grade, where he also served as Webmaster last year and is the current Key Club President. Adrian also founded the Scratch Programming Club at TAB Middle School, where he taught middle school students to understand the Scratch programming language. Outside of clubs, Adrian is a very talented photographer, winning first place for the YCSD Peninsula Districts in the Reflections Contest as an 11th grader. Academically, Adrian is ranked in the top 10% of a very competitive graduating class. He has been an AP Scholar since 9th grade and received highest academic honors every year. He pushes himself to take a rigorous course load and is an extremely hard worker who's organized, dedicated, and driven. Adrian exhibits strong character with a high moral compass. He values experiences over personal possessions and wealth, which has taken him far in life. He is honest, has high integrity, and conquers adversity. He is a bright light at TAB, and we are proud that Adrian Ryan is TAB's Senior of the Month for October. Congratulations.
And finally, I get to read about our senior from York High School, Lucas Hicks. Would you stand with your family, please? Thank you. York High School is proud to announce Lucas Hicks as our October Senior of the Month. Lucas is spirited, I can attest to that, outgoing and kind. Academically, he has challenged himself each year by taking advanced placement and weighted courses. Due to his hard work and dedication, he ranks in the top 20% of his senior class. He is also a student in the York County School Division's Honors Program. Lucas holds membership in the National Honor Society, Science Honor Society, and National Art Honor Society. Lucas is a talented athlete. He has been a member of the York High School football team since his 9th grade year and presently serves as captain of the varsity football team. As captain, he encourages each player to be the best they can be on the field and in the classroom. He has received a varsity letter for the past three years, and he's also been a member of the lacrosse team since 2021. Lucas enjoys being active in the school and surrounding community. He served as class president in 2019 and currently serves the Student Council Association Vice President. He has also volunteered at events within the community and at Riverside Hospital. Lucas, we're proud of you. Thank you for dedicating your time to York High School and leading by example. Congratulations on being recognized as York High School's October Senior of the Month. Next, we're going to move on to our Student Service Awards. Dr. Shander will go down front so that he... Will we announce the student name if the principal would come up with the student? First, we have Thomas Anderson. Mr. Schaefer, would you like to read about Thomas?
Sure. Thomas Anderson. Thomas is up here with our Superintendent Vic Shandor and Beth Welch, his principal. Thomas is a fifth grade student at TAB Elementary. Thomas is involved in a number of clubs at TAB. He is on the morning news crew and participates in the art club after school. This year, he joined the chorus club and the jump rope club. Thomas is also one of our student members in Anchored for Life. Anchored for Life is an opportunity for peers to enhance their leadership skills while supporting students in their school. As an Anchored for Life student member, Thomas provides tours for new students at TAB, creates informational videos to support school initiatives, and plans and participates in military-connected events. He also participates in school events like our Family Engagement Night. Thomas is also an active member in his church and serves as a kids worship leader in shine time. In the community, he has helped stuff backpacks and sort school supplies to give out at the beginning of the year. He has also spread holiday cheer to shoppers at Patrick Henry Mall by singing Christmas carols during the holiday season. Thomas is a kind-hearted person who loves meeting and making new friends. He said one of the best parts of being in Anchored for Life is making fun videos and helping people. Thomas knows that being a dedicated scholar and a good friend will help him reach his goals. He first wants to join the Air Force and fly jets, then become President of the United States. Congratulations.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes, from Grafton Middle School, Dean Hoorth. He's joined onstage by Dr. Shandor and Tiana Anthony, the principal at Grafton Middle School. Grafton Middle School is pleased to announce Dean Hoorth as the recipient of the Student Service Award. Dean is an 8th grade student and has worked to support his community for several years. Dean has been a Boy Scout for eight years and is thankful that his brother Bradley and his father Dennis introduced him to Scouts. He aspires to become an Eagle Scout like his brother. His troop works to support the SPCA, St. Luke's Church, and other local agencies. Dean has spent many hours building storage units, helping food drives to support those in need, and completing outside lawn and building maintenance for the church. Dean likes working with his hands and being outside. He has fond memories of working in the rain while building a bridge at the Nolan Trail. These memories have led him to consider starting his own landscaping and home improvement business when he becomes an adult. He realizes that he has a few years to decide whether to be an entrepreneur or an engineer. Until that time, he will continue practicing his faith and supporting his church through being an altar server and going on mission trips to help communities outside of his own. We celebrate Dean and his dedication to helping others. Congratulations.
And next, we're going to honor our Community Volunteers of the Month. And I get to read about our first from TAB Elementary. Is Medea Raja here? All right, Beth Welch is going to accept that on her behalf. All right, "At the beginning of the year, the school sent information out to parents requesting volunteers to assist in the cafeteria during lunch. Ms. Raja quickly volunteered and showed up every day for the entire lunch block. The extra assistance in the cafeteria allowed us to reduce the amount of time our paraeducators were covering cafeteria duty and put them back in the classrooms. We had a much smoother beginning to our school year due to Ms. Raja's willingness to help out in such a significant area. We're so fortunate to have volunteers like her. In fact, Ms. Raja enjoyed her time at TAB so much, she applied for the job and is now a TAB Elementary School Cafeteria Monitor." Congratulations, Medea Raja. Next, Mr. Richardson?
Yes, from Grafton Middle School, Stephanie Schmuck. If she'd come forward with Ms. Anthony. Well, Ms. Schmuck has supported Grafton Middle School for many years. She has two children that attend Grafton Middle School, and even though both are now in high school, she continues to support the Grafton Middle School. She is a dedicated member of the PTSA, serving as chair at both Grafton Middle and High. And as the beautification chair, she works to keep the planters and outside gardens fresh and updated. Mrs. Schmuck discusses the positive impacts of adding the native plant Butterfly Garden with science teachers and administrators at both Grafton High School and Grafton Middle School. As a master gardener, she recognizes that the addition of the garden will extend lessons well beyond the four walls of the school and move students outside for real-life, hands-on learning. Mrs. Schmuck works with the PBIS program and administrators of Grafton Middle School as a member of the gardening club. Through weekly meetings, she helps students understand the calming benefits of gardening and teaches them all about local birds, plants and vegetables, and the foundations of plants and gardening care. Ms. Schmuck has worked with the local Girl Scout chapter to beautify Grafton Middle School. She helped the troop decide which plants were best for the school's spirit park and helped them to create a rock garden. Finally, we also want to recognize Mrs. Schmuck for working as a substitute teacher when teacher absences became high during the pandemic. She continues to support us as a substitute when she can, and we appreciate all that she has done for Grafton Middle School. Congratulations.
Next, we have our York Foundation for Public Education presentation. Mr. Schaefer, would you share some comments?
I'd like to invite Ms. Catherine Goff, York Foundation for Public Education Board Member, to step forward and assist Dr. Shandor as he presents gifts to each of our award recipients. Please come up when you hear your name called. Congratulations to Thomas Anderson, a fifth grader from TAB Elementary School for citing the Pledge of Allegiance for tonight's board meeting. All right, we would like to recognize tonight's Student Service Award recipients. Thomas Anderson from TAB Elementary School. Yep, and Dean Hoorth from Grafton Middle School. Doing double duty, okay? We also congratulate our Seniors of the Month. Ayana Moore from Bruton High School. Kayla Fields from Grafton High School. Adrian Ryan from TAB High School. And Lucas Hicks from York High School. Special gifts from Cookie Text and Edible Tweet are being presented on behalf of the York Foundation for Public Education in partnership with their donor, Jean Fioka of Cookie Text and Edible Tweet. A Walmart gift card is also being donated by a foundation supporter. Join me in congratulating all of our award recipients.
If you guys would hang out there for a minute, just in case we have parents or family members who want to take pictures, okay? I can't see to tell when they're done, so somebody's going to... okay. All right, congratulations again. Next on our agenda is Virginia School Boards Association Academy Awards. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Ms. Garalt, and good evening, board members. Each year, the Virginia School Board Association recognizes board members across the state for their dedication, time, and hard work in improving boardsmanship skills through VSB meetings, conferences, board development, and training and active involvement in the association. There are five levels of awards based on the points earned from July 1 through June 30 each year. The awards being presented tonight are, and they're in the places where the board members are, the Award of Recognition to Mr. Richardson, let's give him a big round of applause. The Award of Achievement and Bronze Pin to Mr. Higginbotham. And the Award of Excellence and Silver Pin to Ms. Garalt. Let's give her a round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we have our Accent on Academics, Dr. Shandor.
Wonderful, I'm really looking forward to hearing from this group so they can start making their way forward. Tonight's Accent on Academics project is Science of Reading: Evidence-Based Literacy Instruction. The Science of Reading is a body of research focused on how the brain learns to read and the best ways to teach foundational literacy skills. Yorktown Elementary leaders and staff participated in specialized training, targeting evidence-based literacy instruction to meet the needs of all students. Teachers incorporate daily phonemic awareness practice, word manipulation activities, and explicit phonics instruction, which had a positive impact on literacy at Yorktown Elementary School. We're really proud of the results that they had at that school this past year. Dr. Kristen Bowlem, Yorktown Elementary Principal, will now share additional information and introduce the presenters. Dr. Bowlem.
Thank you, good evening, Dr. Shandor, Madam Chair, members of the board. As Dr. Shandor shared, my name is Dr. Kristen Bowlem, and I am very honored to serve as the principal of Yorktown Elementary School. We are pleased tonight to have the opportunity to share our journey into the Science of Reading and Evidence-Based Literacy Instruction, a journey that began last year at Yorktown Elementary School. When we refer to the Science of Reading, we are referring to the body of research from fields like developmental psychology, neuroscience, and literacy that address both how the brain learns to read and how to best teach foundational literacy skills to our students. We know that what sets humans apart from all other living things is that our brains are wired for language, that is speaking, listening, and understanding. But science has shown us that our brains are actually not wired to process written language. That's because written language is really just an invention, just like a spoon. Just as we have to learn how to use a spoon, so we have to learn how to process written language. We must be taught how our written language represents our spoken language in a very direct and systematic way. To process spoken language, several major parts of the brain must perform specific jobs. You might be surprised to learn that the part of the brain that is responsible for connecting sounds to letters isn't there when we're born. We have to build it. To process written language, all parts of the brain must work together, and science has shown us that the connections between these parts of the brain must be created and strengthened. Years of brain-based research shows us that there is a best way to do this. When we refer to evidence-based instruction, we are referring to research-based instructional practices that effectively build and strengthen the connections in the brain that are needed to read and write. One of our Assistant Principals, Ms. King, will now speak to how the York County School Division has supported teachers in the Science of Reading-based professional development.
All right, last year, YCSD made a commitment to early literacy instruction by allocating ESAR funds for letters training for teachers. Some school administrators, including myself, are also participating in letters training. Letters is a professional development course of study that provides this current reading research, as well as guidance on student assessment, how to plan and deliver evidence-based literacy instruction, and information on how to differentiate instruction to meet the needs of all students. I am proud to share that Yorktown Elementary has 20 faculty members that have either completed or are in the process of completing the letters training. Additionally, YES invested in resources and training to help teachers deliver the type of literacy instruction that we know works. Today, we will share with you some of the evidence-based instructional practices that have had such a positive impact on early literacy at Yorktown Elementary. Yorktown Elementary's reading specialist, Katie Cooper, will now share more about these classroom literacy instruction initiatives.
One of the evidence-based practices we began last year is Hegarty Phonemic Awareness Curriculum. Phonemic awareness is the understanding that spoken words are made up of individual sounds. A child who has strong phonemic awareness can isolate and manipulate the words, sounds, and words, blend sounds to make words, and segment words into individual sounds. Research has proven that having strong phonemic awareness is one of the strongest predictors for reading success. The Hegarty curriculum explicitly and systematically teaches phonemic awareness using hand motions for students to have a multisensory learning experience. Matthew, a second-grade student at YES, will share some thoughts about Hegarty instruction.
Every day, we do our Hegarty lesson on the carpet. My favorite part is when we chop up words. Now, I would like to introduce Mrs. Correll, who will lead us in some Hegarty activities. Declan, Armani, and Matthew will join me in modeling these activities. Please join us.
Hello, members of the board. Please follow along with the directions I provide by saying the sounds or words and copying my hand motions. I'm going to say the sounds in a word. Please blend the sounds to say the word. Ch, ah, p. Ch, eh, s. Ch. Or, n. This time, I'm going to say a word. Your job is to segment the words. Math.
M. Math. Math.
Choos.
Choos. Choos.
Cash. Now, I am going to say a word, and then I will tell you to delete a sound. Say cheer.
Cheer.
Without the ch, what's left is?
Cheer.
Say thread.
Thread.
Without the f, what's left is?
Red.
Say shake.
Shake.
Without the sh, what's left is?
Egg.
Finally, I am going to say a word, and then I will tell you to change a sound. Say chip.
Chip.
Now, change ch to sh, and the word is?
Chip.
Say thick.
Thick.
Now, change th to ch, and the word is?
Chip.
Say shin.
Shin.
Now, change sh to th, and the word is?
Shin.
Thank you for following along with us during our Hegarty example. Now, Mrs. Cooper will return to describe the phonics-based instruction we began last year.
Another evidence-based practice we began in kindergarten through second-grade classrooms is explicit decoding or phonics-based instruction. This instruction helps create connections in the brain between speech sounds and how those sounds are represented in print. For this, we use a resource called How to Plan Differentiated Reading Instruction by Sharon Walpole and Michael C. McKenna. This resource was a helpful tool for teachers because it includes a research-based assessment that pinpoints a student's decoding needs and provides lessons that teachers use in their small group instruction to target those decoding needs. Each lesson has critical pieces of a strong phonics lesson plan, including decoding single words and reading short pieces of text with words students can decode or sound out easily. Teachers were able to supplement reading with additional decodable text through books provided by the ESAR grants. Now, Declan will tell you about his experiences with small group reading instruction.
Every day with Ms. Correll, we read and spell words with sounds that we have been practicing. My favorite part of small group is mapping words. Now, please enjoy these video clips. From a small group lesson, you will see students practicing sounds, reading, and spelling words.
From a small group lesson, you will see students practicing sounds, reading, and spelling words.
Win. Count the sounds. How many sounds in win?
Three.
Very good. Spell the first sound, wu. Spell the second sound, i. Spell the third sound, mmm.
Thank you for letting us share how we are learning to read at YES. We will be happy to answer any questions you have.
You guys did a wonderful job.
Yes.
Board members, questions?
Well, I will start off with a comment because my wife went through the letters training last year, and it is no joke. It is an intensive thing. And you finally explained to me what the... I got it now. But as far as the kids go, what did you like the best out of all this?
Who wants to answer?
I like Hegarty more because I like blending the words, and it's really fun.
I'd just like to say our reading schools' scores are certainly a testament to our teachers and our instruction in the classroom. They're over the top, so keep up the great work. Thank you.
Yes. So it looks like you guys are having so much fun when you're doing these exercises, both here and in the video. Does it make you want to, even when you're not in those classes, to do more of these exercises or try to do your own reading at home or writing examples? No?
I know I went in to read in some classrooms last year, and just having kids read to me, they were all using the hand motions and breaking up words. And obviously, at that point, I didn't know what that was. So I had to ask, and it was, I mean, they kind of gave me an example of how they're breaking up these words and helping kids to read. So again, just looking at your S.O.L. reading data from this past year, I mean, you guys have dedicated your time. Obviously, we're looking at dedication of funds to this program, and you can look at it and say, it worked. Because, I mean, that's not just because of the materials. That's because you guys have put so much hard work into it and dedication. So thank you so much. And you guys, you did a great job presenting. It wasn't so bad, was it? So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to take a short recess so we can congratulate our award recipients tonight. We will now reconvene the meeting, and then we'll move into unfinished business, and we have none. So we'll go into our first presentation. And the first one up is our 2022-2023 Pay Plan. Dr. Shandor, would you like to share some information about this topic?
Yes. I apologize. Let me get caught up.
Thank you, Ms. Correll. It's board members. This evening, Dr. Tony Vladu, our chief human resource officer, is going to provide some information regarding the 2022-23 Pay Plan. Dr. Vladu.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Correll, members of the school board, and Dr. Shandor. Tonight, I have a short presentation on three updates to the pay plan. So the first two changes you see on this slide delineate elementary and secondary responsibility. As such, the Associate Director of Educational Technology Innovation, that title changes to Director of Secondary Instruction and Academic Programs. The Associate Director for K-12 Academic Services title changes to Associate Director of Elementary Instruction and Academic Programs. The last items on this slide add recruiting duties and responsibility to an existing position, Personnel Specialist, Absence Management. As in previous presentation, this is an area of high interest in staffing our school. So that title recommending that changes from Personnel Specialist Recruiting and Absence Management. There is a grade change here that is recommended from grade 22 to grade 24. This concludes the recommended changes for tonight. At this time, I can take any questions or comments that you might have.
So the grade change for the recruiting and absence management, that jumps up because of the additional responsibilities with the recruiting portion, correct?
That is correct. There's substantial increase in those duties and responsibility. This position will be responsible for coordinating recruiting events and for leading that work. That is correct.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Dr. Vladu.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vladu.
All right, next we'll move into comments of citizens, our public participation at board meetings. Before I open up for public comments, I will share some remarks. The school board provides a public comment period for the public to comment on topics germane to the business of the school board. The school board expects that each speaker will be courteous, modeling for our students, how one can respectfully disagree with others' views. We ask that speakers address their comments to the entire school board and not to one individual board member, nor to the superintendent, a staff member, or the audience. Speakers will present their comments from the podium. Each speaker may speak for up to three minutes. A timer is visible to speakers from the podium, and speakers should conclude their remarks when the red light comes on. The timer will begin after you state your name and address. I now open up the public participation for comments of citizens. Our first speaker is Sandra Tumanello. Did I say that right?
I'm Sandra Tumanello. I live on Breezy Point Drive in Yorktown, Virginia. And education is in my blood. I was a school guidance counselor. I have my master's degree from Weeman Mary, Specialist in School Supervision. And my grandkids went to school in Yorktown and graduated and did very well. They both got full-pay scholarships to the West Point Military Academy and the Liberty University. So we were very pleased with our experience with the schools here. I want to know, and I want everyone to realize, that for me, integrity, truth, transparency are all so important. And Yorktown has been known for that in previous years. But now there are forces from outside that are trying to make things a little bit on the crazy side. And the transgender policy of 2020 is specifically what I'm talking about. And I know that some people are complaining about the new policy that students can make and parents can make comments on, the Glenn Youngkin policy. But I think that the old policy that's been pushed down people's throats has been based on deception, even lies, lack of transparency with parents, misinformation, and students not being properly guided. Until 2013, transgenderism was considered, it was recognized as a mental disorder. But in 2013, it changed, and it was considered normal. You know, so it now has a designation of being just a normal condition. So that really is a game changer for things, and it's difficult to know how to handle it. And it's only been more recently that it's changed by the World Health Organization. I think that was 2019. Once a student is accepted as a different sex, the next progression is then for the body to follow suit. They're thinking a different sex, so the body should be a different sex. So then comes in the hormones, sex change surgeries. And I just read recently that $30 million was spent to Big Pharma last year for all these hormones that are necessary for these sex changes. And the bottom line is, your sex can't be changed. You're born with your XY chromosomes, and it's there to stay. But the main thing I want to do is to emphasize that our students were involved in the policy that walkout in Grafton. And I'd heard that the board and administrators supported that. I hope that's not the case. And that was written, I think, in the newspaper. And I hope that wasn't the case because it's okay to disagree, and we all have the right to disagree. But I think our students need to be taught to disagree in a respectful way. Does that mean me to send out?
Thank you.
I knew mine was long, so I gave you a little written-up.
Thank you.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Next is Albert Tumanello.
My name is Albert Tumanello, and I live at 138 Breezy Point Drive. Madam Chair, it was quite interesting to hear your rendition of these mission statements that you read. It's quite good. And it was quite good to see all these students come up here and the things they demonstrated and the ones you recognized here. That was quite good. But I'm here this evening because I am concerned. Concerned that our school system is becoming a lab for social change. And it should be just that. However, it should be geared to teaching our children and students to be plumbers and electricians, doctors and accountants, strong and able members of our military, and schoolteachers. You should be teaching them how to become effective team players on our sporting teams, the band, the choir, and debate teams. And based on what I've just said, I think you understand where I'm going, and you see a lot of that. However, so I look to you, members of the school board, and to the superintendent of schools to oversee this ongoing process of our young students to be well-educated, productive, and contributing members of our society as they grow and mature. They're open to many things at this stage in their life, and they need to be guided. That is your job and your calling. It doesn't matter if the student is black or white, gay or lesbian, trans or binary. Your job is to provide the best education possible to all students on the things that I just mentioned about careers and vocations. I think you understand that. That would leave the issue of sex to parents, guardians, pastors, and doctors as needed. And I reiterate, your job must be to educate, not facilitate indoctrination of these young minds on issues about sex that our society, and yes, even here, is pushing upon all of us, particularly those children. I urge you to be diligent, be courageous, and take stands in right policies that produce education and not indoctrination.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tumanello. Next, we have Gary Porter.
Good evening. My name is Gary Porter. I live in District 2. Madam Chair and members of the board, congratulations. Virginia has been declared ground zero in the battleground over parental rights and education. And you board members are right smack dab in the middle of it, whether you want to be or not. I don't know whether you noticed this, but Virginia delegate Elizabeth Guzman, a Democrat from 31st House District, recently announced her intent to introduce a bill in January that will make it a child abuse and neglect for parents to not affirm the gender identity declared by their children. This bill's not going to pass, of course. But her hatred for parents who are not willing to roll over on this issue is evident when she stated she didn't care whether the penalty for this bill became a felony or misdemeanor. The intent was to make it hard for parents to get a job with a CPS incident on their record. A recent poll found that 61% of Americans believe government-run education is headed in the wrong direction. I couldn't agree with them more. It is indeed sad to watch America's public schools being used to destroy traditional American culture. You five elected officials are either knowing accomplices in this project or unwitting pawns. You either know it's happening, or you refuse to open your eyes to the truth of it. First time I addressed this board, I read a quote from John Dewey, which revealed that this cultural change project has been going on for at least 100 years. Dewey knew the schools were key to "social reconstruction," as he called it. If the schools and curriculum could be controlled slowly but surely, the reconstruction would inexorably take place right under the very noses of parents. A school district in Maryland recently reported a nearly 600% increase in gender non-conforming students. Can you imagine why this is happening? Is this simply a fad, which these confused, impressionable kids will outgrow? Or is the way the public schools are handling this issue contributing to the problem? It ceases to become a fad, of course, when children are offered puberty blockers or pushed into having top surgery or bottom surgery as a way to, quote, "become who you really, really are," unquote. How many kids are going to be harmed by accommodating their confusion? In other news, gender transition surgery is projected to become a $5 billion industry in the next decade. Good place to invest, right? If it were up to me, I would dismantle the entire public school system and start over from scratch. I think the system has been so thoroughly infiltrated by people who want to fundamentally change America, and so thoroughly corrupted by CRT, DEI, SEL, and other social change mechanisms that it will be essentially impossible to have it focused once again on simply educating students. And now to the issue most at hand. I suggest this board owes the students and parents of Grafton High and Middle Schools an apology for disrupting their children's education last month by deliberately violating the provisions of the student handbook and allowing a disruptive political meeting to take place during instructional hours. There's simply no excuse for this unless it was to show favoritism to selective political speech. And yes, it was disruptive. Thank you for the opportunity to address you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jeanette Gamble.
Good evening. My name is Jeanette Gamble, and I live at 120 Song Burdrick. Am I ready? Okay. You are not parents. We don't cope of anybody else's kids. You guys do not co-parent with the children or the parents of the kids at schools. Your job is to keep our kids safe, educate them. On the day of the walkout, there was no added security. None was requested from the York County Sheriff's Department. What would have happened to 150 students plus staff that was with them had there been an active shooter? Why weren't parents emailed the day before this event to take place? You stole the rights of parents to make decisions for their children, whether they wanted to send them to school for that or not, to allow them to be a part of it. It seems you use the better-to-ask-for-forgiveness-than-permission approach. You put 150 children in danger because of a political agenda. Grafton High School has a little more than 1,100 students. 10% of them walked out. Some walked out not because they support the reasons behind the walkout, but because they didn't even want to be in class. This was not peaceful, nor was it safe. You are focusing on the wrong percentage of children. You should be more concerned about the 90% of students who want nothing to do with any of the political rhetoric that adults are forcing down their throats. Children should not be protesting anything in school. I was quoted two policies by a board member that I spoke to, since I'm not allowed to say their name. One student or one policy was they cannot be discriminated against if they want to participate in a school organization practice. This was not an organizational event. They have freedom of speech. Yes, they have freedom of speech, but that does not mean they get to protest. Even the Supreme Court said that if it causes a disruption, the school has the right to say, you're not doing it. That same board member said that because I said that there were parents, or not parents, staff members that were in LGBT rainbow shirts, whatever they were, were involved, that he would have them fired immediately if I could tell them. Well, I would say that you have the right, as board members, to go in and get security footage and find out who those teachers are and do what you said you were going to do. If kids want to have a protest for their cause, it should be on their own time. Taxpayers pay teachers to teach, not these kids with their political agendas. Kids are at school for one reason and one reason only. That's to learn. If parents are so invested in their child's cause, they can help them protest outside of school hours. It is your job to maintain order, safety, and education, not to be the parent. If you won't stand up and do your jobs, you can get replaced next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Linda Fairman.
Linda Fairman from TAB area. You have been elected by York County citizens and parents to know what's happening in our schools, to make sure money is spent wisely, to ensure academics are taught, not social engineering indoctrination, and to keep us informed respecting Virginia's parental rights law 1-240.1. It seems you've left that path. Everyone was so happy when students finally went back to school. so happy when students finally went back to school. Everyone thought students could catch up from their two-year academic loss. But did you know the only thing that's really changed is the location of the student? That many classes are still only online with digital lessons, classwork, homework, test quizzes while at school. What a perfect system for data mining our kids' info, too, huh? What's the point of having teachers in the classroom to explain things and differentiate for students needing extra help if everything is just on the computer? Students are staring at their digital screens all day long. The NIH issued a report that too much screen time leads to obesity, poor health, depressive symptoms, and low quality of life for children. A recent Ed Week article says too much screen time leads to poor behavior. So, YCSD's continued online classes are creating the trauma and social emotional problems you're spending millions of dollars to fix with expensive programs and consultants. How does that make sense? Did you know that NAEP, the Nation's Report Card on Student Educational Progress from the Institute of Educational Sciences, shows Virginia is 50th, dead last, in 4th and 8th grade reading achievement, and is the only state to not meet the basic level? Math scores are equally abysmal, and that's from before the lockdowns. What is York County doing to improve this serious academic loss? A York County teacher said they were not allowed to attend last week's Yorktown Day to learn about our history, but had a mandatory professional development day that focused on restorative justice, SEL, social engineering, and learning if a student hits a teacher, a discipline report is only written if the teacher is injured. A student hitting a teacher is physical assault and battery, leaving the teacher with injury to their well-being and sense of safety. How will this teach students to be good citizens and improve academic success? Academic focus is being stolen from our children. Parents and citizens are still concerned about our students, what's being taught in our schools, and how our tax dollars are being spent. It's time for you to put your boots on the ground. It's time for you to get back on track. It's time for you to put a stop to the social and political activism during school hours and return to academic instruction.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fairman.
Thank you.
David Dietrich.
Good evening, members of the School Board, Superintendent Shandor. My name is David Dietrich, 139 Wilderness Road in Hampton. A sickness pervades America today. I give as an example, I was driving to my workplace a week and a half ago on the highway, and a reckless driver hit me from behind, knocked me off the highway at 60 miles per hour. I rolled into a deep ravine and hit some trees and landed on top of my, on the upside-down in my truck. Reason I'm telling you this and why it matters today is that was an uninsured driver. Why was, why is an uninsured driver allowed to drive in this state? Because the, our legislature allows it because of some equity, imaginary equity thinking, that they should have the right, when I have to, I have to absorb the total loss of my business, my vehicle, and my, my health. So what does it have to do with our school system? Well, what, what is our, what, what's happening in York and Hampton, where I'm from? Students have lost years of their lives that cannot be recovered. And, and it's a loss to society at large, not just to children today. Causes a great emotional injury, and why is that? It's because of a failure of leadership, just like it was with the legislature and driving. Poor decisions lead to bad consequences. What are the current education solutions today? Promoting perversion in our school system. Why is that? What does perversion have to do, do with learning math and science and English reading? It's increasing, it's only increasing the ignorance of the students, and it causes destructive behavior, and you've taken your eyes off the ball. You should be the leaders of this school system. Instead of following Satan, you should be listening to God. What is, what is a solution here is to actually teach the children how to be better citizens. Enhanced tutoring, you have to make up for what was lost over the last couple of years. I see nothing in this agenda today, nor do I ever see it in a Hampton agenda, for any focus at all on the actual education of the children. All you do is spend time congratulating each other, and a few students, great, I'm happy for them, and they deserve that. But what about the, the student body as a whole? Instead of excellence, you promote mediocrity in your school system. So finally, you need to consider the reality, the real world. For the last million years, human beings have been either men or women, and children are either men or women, and they need to understand that. Anything that they imagine is not real, and it doesn't help them, and it doesn't help society. We need morality in our schools, and we need a normalcy, that we have standards and a culture that we have to abide by. What, whose rights are important? Is it desires or rights of the, of the majority of Americans? Thank you very kindly.
Thank you.
Wesley.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Shandor. My name is Deborah Wesley, and I reside at 902 Dare Road, Yorktown, Virginia. And I am the President of the York Education Association. I'm here tonight to say thank you for making compensation a top priority. We recognize that economic issues, past and present, prompt a lot of difficult decisions concerning the budget. Raises, market adjustments, step increases, bonuses, insurance costs, all play a part in these difficult decisions. We thank you for the pay increases and the bonuses provided in that budget this year. Respectfully, we ask you to continue to make compensation a top priority, so York County, York County can continue to attract highly skilled educators and retain the experienced, compassionate, and competitive, and committed educators we do have. In addition, I would like to thank you for investing in all of the letters training and the science of reading programs that your elementary school teachers are working so diligently in learning and in teaching our students, so that we can promote quality reading instruction in York County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wesley.
Thank you.
Finally, we have Carol Bauer.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, Dr. Shandor, community members. My name is Carol Bauer. I reside at 314 Brookline, and I'm a member of the York Education Association. I want to say thank you for your efforts to recognize all the many people who helped make our students succeed in our classrooms. On tonight's agenda, you have a proclamation for American Education Week. Specifically in that proclamation, you list some folks that helped make the schools run smoothly: custodians, substitutes, bus drivers, and librarians. Those are just a few of the people that helped make our schools successful. I want to ask you, all of you, when we get to American Education Week, November 14 through 18, that you take a moment and think of what our schools would be like without our ESPs or educational support personnel. Think about what a day would be if our bus drivers didn't get our students to the classrooms. Think about what it would be like if our custodians didn't clean the hallways, the bathrooms, cafeterias, and our classrooms. In many of our classrooms, think what it would be like if we didn't have our pair of educators who sit side by side with our teachers to meet the specific and targeted needs of our students. These are just a few of the dedicated YCSD employees who we need to help us support our students. And I ask you to think about their compensation. Now, many of those employees can make more money at 7-Eleven, McDonald's, or even Target. So as we talk about American Education Week, and we talk about supporting our employees, please consider our educational support personnel and consider increasing their compensation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bauer. I now close the public participation for comments of citizens, and then we'll move on to matters by Board members. Obviously, Mr. Myatt is absent. Mr. Higginbotham?
Sure. A few weeks ago, or maybe it was just last week, it seems to go pretty quickly, we had a community engagement event. Schools were hosting community engagement events. I was at Coventry, and it was incredible to see the community, the teachers, the students all coming together in the classrooms, talking about the things that they're doing in class, the items that they're learning, and demonstrating things for the parents that were in their classroom that I was in with my son. He challenged me to a Jeopardy! game that they had for, for social studies, and sad to say, he understood some of that material a little bit better than I did. It's been a few years since I was studying the different regions in Virginia and everything, but knowing what tributary feeds what, it was just very interesting and neat to see. But one thing I wanted to highlight was the, the counselor at Coventry was having, or the counselors at Coventry had positive notes that parents could fill out and sign for students who might be in need of a pick-me-up or something like that, and so that they had the opportunity to write these notes to, to their own children, their kids, or to anyone else that might need that, that pick-me-up, to provide that, that, to fill that need when someone might be having a rough day, just to have a "you can do it, I'm proud of you" those type of things. And it was just neat to see those pick-me-ups. And the table to fill that out was just packed. Everybody was there. It was just wonderful to see. So I did want to highlight those things that were going on. Couple other things. We have some students who are participating in like the marching band assessments that are coming up this week. The one-act competitions are happening. We got high school drama programs preparing for that. Playoffs are getting ready to start here with volleyball, field hockey, cross-country, football, things like that. Those are going on. So I want to thank all the students for their hard work, the teachers and the parents for all the rides that they're providing and the support that they're giving. I'd also like to sort of throw out a, a plea to support the schools and the PTA programs that are in the school. All the studies show that the more involvement parents and community members have in school, the more successful children are. So if you want to be in the school, see what's going on, help out what's going on, volunteer with the PTA, join the PTA, and be in those, those schools and help those students in the various events, whether it's during school hours, helping with those volunteer opportunities, or after school, some co-curricular things. And then I just want to encourage you to reach out to your teachers. We have conferences coming up, so if you have any questions or concerns, talk with the teachers so that you can have those, those things addressed. And I would encourage the other Board members to check out some of those times and with the conferences in the building, and, and talk with the administrators, the principals, assistant principals, counselors, everybody who's there. But that's it for me.
Mr. Higginbotham. Mr. Schaefer?
Yes. Okay. All right. October was a busy month. I got to go visit all my schools, all four of them, and met a lot of neat kids and teachers. And I followed up on every one of my new teachers that started this year, and they are all doing well. It, it makes me feel good to have a normal school year. I think it's our first normal school year since we've been on the Board, as a matter of fact. Yes, we had a, the Bruton District Engagement Night, which was awesome. It was at Bruton High School, and I'd say there was, there was four, five, 600 people there, from both elementary schools, Queens Lake Middle School and Bruton High School, and got to meet a lot of the parents in my district. Also got to attend the York Foundation for Public Education meeting, which was just like normal. And then I also got to attend a GEAC meeting, which was my first time doing that, which is the Gifted Education Committee, and it was, it was an interesting meeting. It was to see all the things that were going on. And I would say that, yes, the, the best way, if you want to see what's going on in the schools, I'd say the best thing would be to go volunteer in a school. And if anyone would like to go up to any of mine in the Bruton District, all four of them, whether it be elementary, middle, or high school, they would welcome to help. They would let you come in and work and support the classrooms, read with some kids, see what it's like to be in the classroom. Okay? I'd, I'd invite everyone to do that, because it can do nothing but help. Because the more involved that the community and parents are in their, in the schools, the better. I've done it for over 20 years. I had six kids that went through the York County school system, and I can tell you that we are rated number three in the state. We are with some of the best teachers in the state. We have, I think, the best school division. They have two of them in Northern Virginia that they say are better, but I don't believe them. I think it's York County that is. Thank you.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes, I'd just like to use my time to congratulate or thank, actually, the York Lions Club. Every year, they do spot-check screening of our children in our schools, especially the elementary school level, kindergarten or in third grade. They spot-checked 771 children in kindergarten, 984 in the third grade, and they had two, over 200 referrals. Now, a referral doesn't mean there's necessarily something wrong, but could be, and it's worth the follow-up by an eye doctor to find out, to make sure they don't have any, any vision, vision problems. So this is all done in conjunction with our school nurses. The Lions Club just provides the equipment that is regionally used in the region, and provides the volunteers to help screen the children as they come through, and then the reports are all given right to the nurse and then shared with the parents. But I'd like to, to thank the York Lions Club for doing a bang-up job again this year. They've been doing this for many, many years. I think the Lions Club in York County has been in existence over 65 or more years, and I know we've been doing this for at least 30 or more of those years, providing that service to the, to the schools. So thank you, York Lions Club.
It has been a busy month. I know all the falling movement nights kind of put the place back to school nights. It's been really wonderful. Athletics, band competitions. I know for me, even just on the social media sites, watching all the kids just so engaged in the spirit for homecoming weeks, it's really nice to see that back. I know the kids are super engaged and happy that all these normal activities are back, too. So I think they even dialed it up a notch because of that. I got to participate in the mock interviews again this year for the Engaged In program, and I know it's really great for me to do. It actually just gives me such, such hope, even just talking to those kids. We've got so many kids who just have great, great plans in their life, and they're following that up and figuring out how to reach their goals. So that's a great time. I encourage a lot of community members to get involved with that. You can do it through mock interviews. It could just be getting your, your business involved as a business partner, and really just supporting kids through mentorship. I also want to acknowledge the School Division for our first mental wellness night last week. I know that has been years in the making. I know it's something that I definitely wanted to focus on when I ran for School Board, and then COVID hit. So there were so many people that were, that worked really, really hard to put that together. Getting all of those community partners together to put resources in one room for families, I think, was really, really important. And I appreciate the partnership with PTA, too. And I hope we see that the next one is even more well-attended. I just think it's really important to have all those resources in one place. So thank you to everybody who was involved in that. Got to attend a SEAC meeting, Special Education Advisory Council meeting, and a lot of people in attendance for that, and then also the York County PTA meeting. It's great to see all the work that they're doing. But coming up this week, we have English Learners Engagement Night, after middle school, that's tomorrow night, and then we have the Band Expo on Wednesday.
Thursday.
That's Wednesday.
Oh, it's a Wednesday?
Yes. You have to be at the right day, right day, Mr. Schaefer.
I got it.
So I'm really excited about that. That was the first time last year that we got to see that, and all four of the bands do their performance individually, and then they come together at the end and perform together. I just think it's really, really great, so I encourage everybody to attend that. And that's all I have for this evening. We'll move into the really fun part, financial matters.
Oh, yes.
Your turn, Mr. Schaefer.
Oh, boy. Ah, yes. This is the consideration of approval for claims certified for payment for September of 2022. For instructional expenditures, we spent 1.16 million. It included, let's see, the big ones were 142,000 for reading intervention. Okay, that's the SIPs instructional materials. 366,000 for special education tuition. 369,000 for Vista Higher Learning for World Language Textbooks. Then we had food service expenditures, approximately $245,000, and that went to, the vast majority of it went to SEDEXO. We had construction expenses of 2.4 million, and included payments to Heartland for the Seaford renovation, 402,000 for York High roof replacement, and 54,000 for Cab Playground. We also, let's see, IT-related expenditures were 404,000 this year. The big one was to CDW for 311,000, 75,000 for to Kronos. Operations and maintenance expenditures totaled $131,000, and the big one for that was, of course, Dominion Energy for 121,000. Administration expenses totaled 41,000. The Northwest Educational Association was $27,000 for academic assessments and educational training services. Transportation expenses were 63,000, and included a payment to Tyler Technologies for hardware and software support. and software support. For September revenues, we had, the September revenues increased by 182,000 when compared to September of last year. This is due to the increase in tuition students. State revenue for September 22 increased by about 1.5 million. This is a result of the expected increase in state funding for fiscal year '23 in basic aid and compensation. Sales tax revenue for September 22 increased by 900,000 when compared to September '21. This is, just means that the economy of the state is getting better. For expenditures, instructional expenditures for September have increased 3.8 million over the same period last year. This is due to the six and a half percent salary increase. Admin, attendance, and health expenditures increased by about 515,000 compared to last year. This is due to the addition of the frontline HR management system, the 5.5% salary increase and the increase in employer health premiums. Technology expenditures for September increased by about 465,000 for the same period of last year for the, as a result of the replacement of several division servers and replacements of staff technology. Local revenue for food service increased by 174,000 over the same period last year because we started charging students for meals. The USDA ended the free breakfast and lunch programs. Okay, so Resolution 22-47 requires the board's approval authorizing procurements of more than $50,000. There's four items on resolution totaling 410,400. A 14-foot refrigerated box truck for food service operations is $200,000. Beautiful Minds Speech Therapy and Speech Language Services, 88,400. Heartland Construction, which is for the Seaford renovation project, 64,000. And Belfour Restorative Cleaning Services at Coventry Elementary is $58,000. Madam Chair, I now move to approve the financial matters as listed.
Second.
Ms. Ford?
Yes, a motion was made by Mr. Schaefer and seconded by Mr. Higginbotham to approve the financial matters as listed. Board members, you may cast your vote. Thank you. It passed four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we'll move on to consent calendar. We have approval of personnel actions, consideration of approval of minutes for a special meeting and work session on September 12, 2022, special meeting on September 22, 2022, and a regular meeting on September 26, 2022. Approval of donations in the amount of $3,001. Approval of overnight field trips for the period of November 1, 2022 through November 1 of 2023. Approval of student organizations and activities for the period of November 1, 2022 through November 1, 2023. And approval of updates to the 2022-2023 pay plan. Can I get a motion to approve consent calendars listed?
Before we do that, I'm sorry to interrupt, Ms. Garalt. There are two items on there I just wanted to sort of highlight or just make special note of. One, with the personnel actions, I believe there's 23 or 24 people on the personnel actions in the prep program. It's been a little bit of time since we've talked about that, but I want to highlight those teachers, those people who are coming back to do that. Those are, if I'm remembering correctly, retired teachers who are coming back to work as mentors and subs within that building, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then the, also, the approval of student organizations and activities, if you look through that list, elementary, middle, and high, it is hundreds of opportunities for these students outside of basic instruction that's in the class with all of the things from Lego to programming to all sorts of different athletics and different extra, yeah, 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 everything. So I just want to highlight those incredible programs that we do have that sometimes not necessarily glossed over, but they're just assumed that they're there. But we have hundreds of staff taking care of these things for these students.
That's really great. It was a great list. I was very shocked by the sheer number.
Yeah.
A lot of staff that are dedicating time outside of work hours for that, absolutely. Thank you for bringing that up.
Okay.
I still need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as listed.
And I'll second.
Ms. Ford?
Yes, a motion was made by Mr. Schaefer and seconded by Mr. Richardson to approve the consent calendar as listed. Board members, you may cast your vote. Thank you. The motion passed four to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. And next we'll move into our action items. The first is we have approval of a proclamation for American Education Week, November 14 through 18, 2022. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Ms. Garalt. Board members, the annual observance of American Education Week dates back to 1921. It was established for the purpose of informing the public of the accomplishments and needs of the public schools and to secure the cooperation and support of the public in meeting those needs. American Education Week is a reminder that all children deserve a high-quality education and that each and every employee of the school division, be it teachers, administrators, custodians, bus drivers, or office staff, play an integral role in supporting and equipping students every day. Thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion and a second to approve the proclamation for American Education Week.
I move to approve the proclamation for American Education Week, November 14 through 18, 2022.
I'll second.
Ms. Ford?
Yes, a motion was made by Mr. Higginbotham and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve the proclamation for American Education Week. Board members, you may cast your vote. Thank you. It passed four to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of Resolution 22-48, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2023 school board budget. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Ms. Garalt. I'm going to ask Mr. Bill Bowen, our chief financial officer, to share remarks related to Resolution 22-48. Mr. Bowen?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Madam Chair, members of the board. Resolution 2248 authorizes the superintendent to amend the FY23 operating budget to include a supplemental appropriation of York County Board of Supervisors in the amount of $650,000. The supplemental appropriation is provided for the purpose of a pay adjustment for FY23. The superintendent recommends a 1% cost-of-living adjustment effective the first full pay period in January. What this means is that staff that are paid bi-weekly, they will see a 1% adjustment effective in their January 27 paycheck, which covers the pay period of July 1 through July 14. Monthly paid employees will see the 1% adjustment in their January 20 paycheck. The 1% increase is provided to all full-time and part-time employees. So for FY23, this action increases compensation from 6.5% to 7.5% for teachers and pairs and from 5.5% to 6.5% for all other staff members. This is the highest annual increase in teacher compensation since 2005. In December, Dr. Bladu will present a new pay plan for the board to approve, which will include the 1% adjustment.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen.
I need a motion and a second to approve Resolution 22-48, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2023 school board budget.
Madam Chair, I move the approval of Resolution 22-48, amending the fiscal school year 2023 school board budget.
Second.
Ms. Ford?
Yes, a motion was made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Mr. Higginbotham to approve Resolution 2248 as stated. Board members, you may cast your vote. The motion passed four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. And next we have approval of Resolution 22-49, a resolution approving a staff bonus and authorizing the use of division allocated ESER funds to supplement the state ESER funding. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Ms. Garalt. Again, Mr. Bowen, our chief finance officer, will share remarks related, excuse me, to Resolution 22-49. Mr. Bowen?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Madam Chair, members of the board. Resolution 2249 does two things. It approves staff budget, I mean, staff bonuses as recommended by the superintendent and authorizes the use of division allocated ESER funds to supplement the state funding. Board members, you'll recall in June of this year, when the budget was approved, it also included an additional allotment or appropriation from the state in the amount of $1.2 million specifically for staff bonuses. Also, the state had recommended that the school divisions, school divisions supplement the state allocation, which comes from the state's ESER funds, that we use division allocated ESER funds to supplement that funding, state funding, for a $1,000 bonus. So the superintendent this evening is recommending bonuses for employees of record as of November 1, 2022. Full-time staff will receive a $1,000 bonus, and this is a pre-tax amount. Part-time staff and long-term subs will receive a $500 bonus, and substitutes that have worked at least five days between August 29th and November 1st would receive a $100 bonus. And if approved, this bonus will be paid in a separate check to employees on Friday, November 18.
I need a motion and a second to approve Resolution 22-49, resolution approving a staff bonus and authorizing the use of division allocated ESER funds to supplement the state ESER funding.
I move to approve Resolution 22-49, approving a staff bonus and authorizing the use of division allocated ESER funds to supplement the state ESER funding.
I'll second.
Ms. Ford?
Yes, a motion was made by Mr. Higginbotham and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve Resolution 22-49 as stated. Board members, you may cast your vote. Motion passed four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Next, we have approval of Resolution 22-50, a resolution requesting the board supervisors to reappropriate the FY22 end-of-year balance. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Ms. Garalt. Once again, Mr. Bowen will share remarks related to Resolution 22-50. Mr. Bowen?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Madam Chair, members of the board. Resolution 2250 requests the York County Board of Supervisors to reappropriate the FY22 end-of-year fund balance of 5.69 million to the school division for specific use. The superintendent recommends the following: transferring $1.2 million to the capital improvement fund to reduce borrowing for school-related projects scheduled in FY24. Transfer a half a million dollars to the capital improvement fund to pay for furniture for the renovation and non-classroom expansion at Seaford Elementary, for completion of the YRA security vestibule, the addition of security equipment, and an energy study at TAB High School. And transfer 3.9 million to the technology reserve fund for the replacement of, first replacement of student one-to-one technology and division servers.
I need a motion and a second to approve Resolution 22-50.
I move to approve Resolution 22-50, a resolution requesting the board of supervisors to transfer the end-of-the-year balance.
I'll second that.
Ms. Ford?
Yes, a motion was made by Mr. Schaefer and seconded by Mr. Richardson to approve Resolution 22-50 as stated. Board members, you may cast your vote. The motion passed four to zero. Thank you, board.
All right, next we have approval of Resolution 22-51, a resolution transferring funds from the Workers' Compensation Fund to Capital Improvement Fund and Health and Dental Fund.
Thank you, Ms. Garalt. This is our last one.
Sorry.
That's all right. Mr. Bowen, our chief financial officer, will share remarks relating to Resolution 22-51.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Madam Chair, members of the board. For more than five years, the school division has maintained a fund balance in the Workers' Compensation Fund of $2.8 million or greater. The superintendent recommends transferring 800,000 from fund balance with 415,000 transferred to the capital improvement fund for the purchase of elementary textbooks and 385,000 transferred to the Health and Dental Fund to ensure balances are sufficient to cover premiums and claims.
Thank you. I need a motion and a second to approve Resolution 22-51.
Madam, go ahead.
You do it. You're going to, we're going to say it enough times.
I'll say it again. Madam Chair, I'd just like to point out, for people that may be watching our meeting, you know, we're listening to these resolutions and we're approving them, but we've discussed all these at our work sessions. We've asked all our questions we have, if we had any, and along the way, over the last two weeks, we had opportunities to call individually if we had more questions. So if it looks like we're just rolling through this, I want people to know, we've heard this already, even with our first reading of policies as well. With that, I would like to approve Resolution, or make a motion to approve Resolution 22-51, transferring funds from the Workers' Compensation Fund to the CIP Fund and Health Dental Fund.
I'll second.
Ms. Ford?
Yes, a motion was made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Mr. Higginbotham to approve Resolution 22-51 as stated. Board members, you may cast your vote. The motion passed four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Next, we'll move into a policy discussion, and we have none this evening. We'll move into policy first reading, and we have our first reading of Policy IIAV, Instruction Materials with Sexually Explicit Content. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Ms. Garalt. There have been no changes to this policy since last month, and it will come back for a second reading in November.
We'll move on to policy second reading, action. We've got our second reading of Policy I, Instruction, and also Policy GAB of the York County School Board Policy Manual. Dr. Shandor?
Yes, there have been no additional changes to this policy and it is ready for board approval.
All right. Need a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Policy I, Instruction, and also Policy GAB of the York County School Board Policy Manual.
I move to approve Policy I, Instruction, and Policy GAB of the York County School Board Policy Manual.
Second.
Ms. Ford?
Yes, a motion was made by Mr. Higginbotham and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve the Policy I as stated. Board members, you may cast your vote. The motion passed four to zero. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to report to the superintendent. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Ms. Garalt. Just a couple comments this evening. Recently I had the opportunity, and I think one of the board members mentioned it, about serving as a judge for some of our homecoming walls. It's absolutely a great time. The kids put so much into it, and they're so creative. So always amazed at their creativity, so encouraged by their team spirit, and some of the schools, there's some dancing that goes on in like the '70s era, so that was fun to watch, those kids at TAB High School. They use their unique decorating skills, enjoy some friendly competition, and it's something I know that our high school principals and the kids enjoy every year. Last Tuesday evening, I had the opportunity to attend a student mental wellness event. It was held at Grafton Middle School. York County School Division and the York County PTA co-hosted this wellness forum for families and students from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. The family engagement event provided attendees an opportunity to engage with several community organizations who staffed resource tables. Ms. Heather Nickerson, Licensed Professional Counselor and Clinical Supervisor for Child and Adolescent Services at Colonial Behavior Health, was the keynote speaker. Family, students, and community members who attended the event were provided valuable information about student mental wellness and the opportunity to learn about resources available to students in the division and our community. I appreciate the efforts of Ms. Andrea Evans, she's our coordinator for school counseling, Ms. Kathy Anthony, Lead Social Worker, and Ms. Cara Jaegel, Lead School Psychologist at the PTA, and others involved with coordinating this important event. Finally, before we sign off for the evening, on Tuesday, October 11, parents receive notification to complete their federal impact aid cards. This is an annual survey that helps to determine the amount of federal impact aid funds the school division receives for our students whose guardians, parents or guardians are connected to the federal government, whether they're in the armed forces, a civil servant, or a civilian contractor working on federal property. YCSD receives about $8.7 million annually as a direct result of this survey. This is not a York County School Division requirement, this is a federal requirement. These funds are critical to the YCSD budget as they represent 60% of the federal funds that we receive. In addition, these funds help to maximize the tax from the local government. Board members, you may recall that the last two years, the survey was not required because the federal government allowed school divisions to use survey data from the fall of 2019, which was pre-pandemic. This year, the survey is conducted online using Rycor. Most of our families are familiar with Rycor, and they use the system to sign the student handbook and IT authorization forms. As of Friday, approximately 8,300 surveys have been completed, which represents about 65%. I think we updated that today, and we're up to like 75%, correct? We're just under 75%. So we make, our principals, we appreciate the work that our schools have been doing. We've offered some creative incentives at some of the schools to make sure that these things get taken care of as well. So that's all I have this evening, and I certainly ask parents to take a few minutes and complete this important survey information. This concludes the superintendent's remarks. Thank you.
Our next work session will be held on Monday, November 7, at 6:00 p.m. downstairs here at York Hall. We now have need to hold three closed sessions. Can a board member please make a motion and a second to take us into closed session relating to personnel matters?
I move that the York County School Board convene a closed session to discuss personnel matters relating to specific employees pursuant to the personnel exemption at Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
I'll second.
Ms. Ford?